I'm going to call this meeting in the Simi Valley City Council to order. Do we have any reports from closed session?
There are no items to report, Mayor.
Thank you. Joe, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the Black of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Here.
Councilmember Littler?
Here.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Judge?
Here.
And Mayor Thomas?
Are there any items for agenda review?
Mr. Mayor, two items of note. One is there, we have a supplemental on item 9C. We're providing the legislative format of the legislative platform for your consideration, just providing to you the changes that took place between last year and what we're proposing. And lastly, there is a, just a change on the minutes noting Mayor Thomas as the adjournment mayor on the January 9th minutes, and that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only, and all further reading be waived.
Second? The motion passes unanimously.
If any member of the city council may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should declare so at this time. Seeing none.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the first item on the agenda is item 1D1, presentation of certificates of appreciation to outgoing special event support committee members, and Heidi D'Nardo is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the city council. Tonight, we are recognizing five special events support review committee members who donated their time to review 12 special event grant applications requesting $71,669 and had the difficult job of making grant funding recommendations of $25,000 to the city council. Committee members chaired a public meeting held on December 14th of 2022 and listened diligently to presentations from many of the city's nonprofit organizations. Tonight, we would like to recognize these individuals for their generous service given to the community as a special event support review committee member. I'd like to first take a moment to recognize Delilah Minter, representing Neighborhood Council Number One, who volunteered her time, was not able to attend this evening's presentation. And now, I'd like to invite the following committee members to come down to the podium as they call their names. Representing Neighborhood Council Number Four, Chair Joe Pachowski. From Neighborhood Council Number Three, Vice Chair Julie Bursen. From Neighborhood Council Number Two, Gail Sutton. And representing Council on Aging, Ted Andrews.
Well, thank you very much for spending your time and helping accomplish this, and it's much appreciated. I know it's a, you know, taken out of your own life, but time to come in and do this, but well worth it. Thank you.
And while you're coming back up, we have paid attention to your encouragements to make it easier on you next time around with more funding.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is item 1D2, presentation of a proclamation declaring February 2023 as Black History Month, and Heidi D'Nardo will present this item as well.
Good evening again. I'll be reading the Black History Month proclamation, and it reads as follows. Whereas the celebration of Black history can be traced back to 1926, when writer and scholar Dr. Carter G. Woodson, the father of Black history, began the annual observance each February to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln to recognize the contributions of Black Americans in the nation's history. And whereas, since February 1976, when President Gerald Ford proclaimed Black History Month to recognize the important and innumerable contributions made to our nation's life and culture by Black citizens, all American presidents have designated February as Black History Month and endorsed a theme. And whereas, this year's theme for Black History Month is Black Resistance, which will explore how African Americans have resisted historic and ongoing oppression since the nation's earliest days, and the Simi Valley City Council recognizes the egregious discrimination and bigotry that Black Americans have endured throughout our nation's history. And whereas, Black History Month serves as a reminder to keep up the fight for justice and equality for all, combat racism, and continue to build a more diverse, supportive, inclusive, and protective community. And whereas, Black History Month is a prompt to the citizens of Simi Valley to reflect on the sacrifices and contributions made by generations of African Americans and continue the nation's march towards the day when every person knows the unalienable rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and to build a better and brighter future. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Simi Valley does hereby proclaim the month of February 2023 as Black History Month in the city of Simi Valley to celebrate the rich contributions that Black Americans have made to our society. Thank you.
Oh, I think it's important as a society that we constantly strive to do better, and this is a good reminder of that. Thank you.
No, I think it's for you, Fred. I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is item 1D3, presentation of a proclamation declaring February 2023 as American Heart Month, and Heidi D'Nardo will present this item as well.
It's me again with Heart Month and Valentine's, but we'll focus on American Heart Month. Proclamation reads as follows. Whereas cardiovascular disease affects more than 120 million people of every age and race in the United States, claiming nearly 700,000 lives per year. And whereas, heart disease has long been the leading cause of death in the United States, with nearly half of all American adults having at least one major risk factor for cardiovascular disease. And whereas, cardiovascular diseases are the number one killer of women in the United States, and women from racial and ethnic minority populations, including Black, Hispanic, Asian American, and Native American women, and women from indigenous populations have a higher risk of death from cardiovascular disease, but are less likely to know of the risk. And whereas, the American Heart Association encourages individuals to adopt life's simple seven to stay healthy: be active, maintain a healthy weight, learn about cholesterol, don't smoke or use smokeless tobacco, eat a heart-healthy diet, maintain a healthy blood pressure, and learn about blood sugar and diabetes. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Simi Valley, in recognition of the importance of the ongoing fight against heart disease and stroke, does hereby proclaim February 2023 to be American Heart Month in the city of Simi Valley, and urges all residents to take action for their heart health, presented this 13th day of February 2023.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 2, public statements on appointments, special presentations, and informational reports. Mr. Mayor, we have no speakers for item 2. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 3B1, economic development presentation, and Linda Swan and Kelly Tinker will present this item.
Okay, we'll just get this PowerPoint slide up, and we'll get started. Well, good evening, Mayor Thomas and city council. This evening, management analyst Kelly Tinker and I will be providing the presentation. As we welcomed both Mayor Thomas and Councilmember Rhodes in December of '22, staff thought it prudent to provide an overview of the 2022 calendar year, to bring our new elected officials up to date, as well as share some key economic indicators, which show a continual annual trend of business resiliency to the city council. So let's begin with sales tax. Here's a snapshot of multiple quarters spanning from quarter 2, 2020 to quarter 2, 2022, which is April through June. The most current data on hand, we see the resiliency and strong demand as the economy emerges from the pandemic. Consumer spending for quarter 2, '22 remains strong. Inflation, which is driving up cost of goods and services, also serves as a factor in increased sales tax. Despite rising menu prices, patrons continue to enjoy frequent casual eateries and quick service restaurants. Looking at a quarter comparison, sales tax revenues increased 5.62% when compared to quarter 2, '21, and 46.19% when compared to quarter 2, 2020, which was the onset of the pandemic. General consumer goods, internet sales, and autos and transportation were the three largest sectors that brought in sales tax dollars. General consumer goods retailers reported solid sales, but could not match the stellar receipts from last year when shoppers had more savings and stimulus dollars to spend. We see some consumers switching buying patterns to services. New vehicle sales softened within the auto transportation group as reduced inventory continues to be an issue in this quarter, along with the higher pricing to acquire a vehicle. Crude oil prices continue their record-breaking pace for another double-digit quarter of gains in the fuel service station sector with higher prices at the pump. Building, construction, and business industry sectors posted modest gains also. So moving ahead, let's look at vacancy rates for the industrial, office, and retail sectors. A vacant space refers to all space not currently occupied by a tenant regardless of any lease obligation that may be on the space. As a rule of thumb, vacancy rates below 10% is good, and anything less than 5% is excellent. So the line graph shows a fairly steady trend in recent quarters among the three sectors. Vacancy rates for quarter 3 to date are 1.67% for industrial, 7.47% for office, and 8.5% for retail. The town center started reporting to CoStar in late December '21, which explains why the graph trends upward for the retail sector in quarter 1, '22. As the retail sector has seen a moderate increase over the last four years, we do see it trending downwards under 9%, as the industry finds kind of the right balance for the community. Recent leasing of some of the larger available retail spaces like the former Bed Bath &amp; Beyond and Cos Plus locations are helping to bring retail vacancy percentages down even further. So as you can see here in comparing the vacancy percentages among the larger cities in Ventura County, Simi Valley's vacancy rates in the office and industrial sectors are right in line with our neighboring communities. Retail vacancy percentages are slightly elevated as compared to the rest of the county, as the city continues to work with business owners on finding the right fit and formula to meet the changing retail needs for our Simi Valley residents. Industrial vacancy numbers are likely to shift over the next several quarters as more of the scheduled development enters the available market, but demand indicators continue to point towards strong lease and purchase activity, particularly in newly constructed industrial complexes.
So looking deeper at the vacancy rates and space available, we've broken out by data in this industry classification. So of the 9.2 million square feet of industrial space in the city, only 333,277 square feet, 22 properties in total, are vacant. The chart shows us that those properties with available space ranging from 2,000 square feet to less than 15,000 square feet have the greatest vacancy percentages. This map is a visual representation of where the vacant industrial properties are located, so you can see where they're concentrated in the city. In the northwest side, that comprises more than 137,000 square feet of vacant industrial space. The properties shown here are located on Industrial, Heritage Oak, and Park Center. With the current robust demand for industrial space, many of these properties will be leased prior to the next update provided by staff. Looking at the office sector with the same chart representation of the 1.8 million square feet of office space in the city, there's 181,336 square feet, 25 total properties that are available for lease. The pie chart shows us that there's a lack of demand for office space in various size categories in these 25 specific properties. So keep in mind that leasing office space can be troublesome for a property owner if a broker is not utilized, if a marketing plan is not in existence, or if a large majority of the building is leased by a single tenant, or if a building is older and doesn't provide new amenities. So this map shows office vacancy locations that are relatively evenly distributed through the city, and the north end of Sycamore Drive is really only the large concentration in the area where the medical office buildings are located by the Simi Valley Hospital. The images shown are the properties located on Guardian, Sycamore, and Los Angeles, which combined make up 42% of the city's total vacant office space, 76,535 square feet. The remaining vacant square footage of 104,000 is comprised of 22 different remaining properties located throughout the city with spaces ranging from 550 square feet to 15,000 square feet. Looking at the same graph for the retail sector, of the 6.6 million square feet of retail space in the city, 471,633 square feet, or 78 total properties, have vacancy. Looking at the pie chart, we can see that a large number of the retail vacancies lay in square footage typically occupied by small business tenants who need 5,000 square feet or less to operate their business. We can see that retail vacancies are also clustered throughout the city. The majority of space is concentrated in the city's larger aging shopping centers, such as the Mountain Gate Plaza, Sycamore Plaza, and the smaller shopping centers along Tappo Street. It's important to keep in mind that the Los Angeles Street and Tappo Street corridor specific plan will provide mixed-use recreational and commercial opportunities for these areas in the hopefully short future. So looking at 2022 in review, these are some of the completed development projects that the city has seen. 2022 saw strong investment in commercial development with 570,916 square feet of newly constructed industrial space coming online for lease and purchase, bringing Simi Valley to a total inventory of more than 9.2 million square feet of industrial space. Of the four projects that are shown on this slide, the properties at 2680 West Hills and 865 East Cochrane are completely occupied, and the 4753 industrial listing has only 10,000 square feet of available space left. The city is well positioned to welcome new and help existing businesses expand into larger locations. So this is the 1800 Tappo Canyon Campus, the Tappo Commerce Center. City staff have been working with the commercial broker on the Tappo Commerce Building since inception. Here you can see the project details and the site map for the center located at 1800 Tappo Canyon, with five buildings making up the new campus ranging from 26,000 square feet to 135,000 square feet, and five different access points from Los Angeles Avenue and Tappo Canyon Road. The Tappo Commerce Center already has two tenants in place with Four Wall Entertainment, who's relocating from Los Angeles, and Entertainment Earth, an existing business here in the city that's expanding operations and occupying 135,000 and 67,000 square feet respectively. The remaining three buildings are in the final stages of obtaining occupancy and expected to be leased by quarter 2. So upcoming, with ongoing projects that are expected to complete in 2023, development continues into 2023 with more than 768,806 square feet of additional industrial space that will be coming online throughout the year, bringing the total amount of new industrial space in the city to more than 1.3 million square feet between 2022 and 2023. The largest of the four properties shown in this slide is the Easy Street Industrial Center at North Chain and Easy Street, and that property can be shown here in this site map, providing a more detailed look at the Easy Street Industrial Center. This complex is a 500,502-square-foot industrial campus comprised of six separate buildings, ranging in size from 26,000 to 175,000 square feet. This complex will offer a more wide range of use options capable of accommodating space needs even as small as 3,800 square feet.
Well, Simi Valley continues to be a desirable location for businesses and their employees. During the past year, the city has welcomed several businesses. Some of these are well-known, so we are going to highlight those that are less retail-oriented. On-track and Field Sporting Good Equipment Dealers specializing in track and field equipment joined us. Platt and Stone, a family-owned company that has been making cast-stone products for over 30 years located to Easy Street. Chatsworth Products, CPI relocated their Chatsworth operations to 4175 Guardian Street, strategically locating themselves to Simi Valley with the goal to consolidate their Westlake Village and Agora locations. CPI serves critical technology equipment needs with products and services that protect infrastructure investment in information and communication technology. Four Wall Entertainment provides concert and event lighting and leased a large space in the Tappo Commerce Center. Ace Hardware has signed a lease to occupy the former Cos Plus location. Pantera Water Pool and Spa relocated from Santa Monica to 3987 Heritage Oak and offers a variety of products for commercial, residential, municipal, and agricultural sectors, which includes water softening filtration and water supply disposal, and pool and spa equipment. Mist Incorporated relocated from Chatsworth to 271 West Easy Street and manufactures and distributes a multitude of cutting tools and related items for a wide array of aerospace and precision sheet metal. River Plate is an end-to-end fulfillment logistics, warehousing, and distribution center relocated from the San Fernando Valley to 2950 Madera Road. Alpine Corporation, a family-owned business that specializes in wholesale garden decor, fountains, pond supplies, and gifts relocated from the city of Commerce with the purchase of 2680 West Hills Court. Snyder Diamond Corporation went into a 76,000-square-foot building at 2390 Ward Street and is a distributor of kitchen appliance and bathroom fixtures. So as staff continues to work with the commercial broker community, we will continue our efforts to recruit a device group, a diverse group, of new businesses.
The Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce continues to celebrate and welcome businesses as well with ribbon-cutting events for their members. This slide highlights a few of the events that council may have attended during the With regard to filming, the city welcomes dozens of productions every year and has earned the reputation for fast, friendly service and permitting policies. Due to the city's unique geography and proximity to Los Angeles, filmmakers take advantage of filming opportunities in various locations in the city, including facilities at the Rancho Simi Rock and Park District and Allied Studios. Several popular TV shows and films, such as Station 19, 911, Being the Ricardos, NCIS, SWAT, Tarzana, All Rise, Promised Land, Everything Everywhere All at Once, as well as The Mayans MC, who ride their motorcycles through Simi Valley's hillsides from time to time. They all film in Simi Valley. Although film permits issued in 2022 are relatively the same as the prior calendar year, filming days have trended downwards in the city as well as regionally. Throughout the LA region, studios have pared back movie and TV production that surged during the COVID-19 pandemic. The city continues to be a desirable place to conduct business, and we are and we are seeing a continued investment in the community through various transactions as investors see the opportunity for businesses to operate in Simi Valley. The 186,726-square-foot two-tenant building located at 3935 Heritage Oak Court in Simi Valley sold for $56.4 million in July of 2022. The Smart and Final Retail Shopping Center located at 5135 East Los Angeles Avenue, consisting of 82,366 square feet, sold for $19.6 million. 2125 North Madera, a 70,194-square-foot two-tenant industrial building, sold in September 2022 for $56.4 million. And the Simi Valley Market Place, which is an 81,840-square-foot shopping center anchored by Smart and Final, and includes the three out parcel retail buildings, sold for $25.5 million in July of 2022. And it includes the medical building fronting Los Angeles Street and the entire shopping center.
So moving on to unemployment. For quarter three '22, the city had an unemployment rate of 2.83%. Low unemployment means it's a job seeker's market. This is a significant improvement when compared to the city's unemployment rate in quarter three '21. Our neighboring cities in Ventura County had similar unemployment numbers. Oxnard trending the highest in quarter three '22 as it is the largest city in the county with a population of 207,000. As a whole, the city's unemployment rate has been remaining fairly stable, hovering in the 3% range for the past few quarters. Los Angeles County's unemployment rate for quarter three '22 was 4.8% compared to Ventura County's 3.33% and the state's rate of 3.90%. So although unemployment numbers are low throughout the region, businesses continue to struggle to find labor to fill positions. Data suggests that several workers have retired, dropped out from waiting for better opportunities and pay and benefits, or have simply left the area. Whatever the cause, staff continues to hear from the business community that more labor is needed to meet consumer demand as this has put a strain on their business operations. The city and chamber continue to host job fairs to support our business community. Our next presentation to the city council will take a more in-depth look into the labor market and industry sectors. So we continue to work with Nadelson Dale as they complete the economic development study, which began in January '22. To date, Nadelson has conducted a hotel market study, a SWOT analysis, has researched the office, industrial, and retail sectors and their affiliated workforce conditions. They performed a retail market study also. They have held two stakeholder summit meetings. Thereafter, they will conduct two community workshops to engage the public. Nadelson will provide an action-oriented plan that best reflects the needs of Simi Valley and balances economic development opportunity with community priorities. So our strategic planning process segues nicely into the Envision project as the city is also working with another consultant, Grun and Associates, on a grant-funded project that will create a community vision for the revitalization of the Los Angeles Avenue and Tappo Street corridors, which will include the provision of new housing, commercial, and recreational opportunities. Envision Simi Valley are also carrying out extensive stakeholder and community engagement process, working to capture the community's wants and needs in the development of a plan that sets the city up for long-term success while prioritizing the well-being of our residents. So the city council approved the development and implementation of a revolving loan program, which was launched in January 2023. Administered by the Economic Development Collaborative of Ventura County, the program will provide funding for working capital, job creation and retention, and equipment and inventory purchases to the small business community. Loan amounts are up to $100,000 at a below-market interest rate of 5.25% with an 84-month loan term. So as of February 8th, '23, the Economic Development Collaborative reported substantial interest with over $800,000 of revolving loan fund requests in the application pipeline. So this demonstrates the right program made available to our business community. So we also continue to partner with the EDC VC, Weave, and the SBDC and share information and program opportunities with our business community. So Weave is Women's Economic Ventures, and SBDC is a Small Business Development Center. We push out the weekly EDC webinar schedule on the city's social media accounts, which includes a variety of webinars ranging from QuickBooks, social media tutorials, data analytics, cybersecurity, and marketing strategies, and many more. So there's much on the horizon. There's much forthcoming down the pipeline. The EDC will be rolling out a free, short-term program designed to increase the digital skills of job seekers, current workers, and small businesses. Workers will gain highly transferable digital literacy and technical skills to help them move into better-paying jobs throughout multiple industries. Small business owners will gain technical skills that allow them to modernize and improve their businesses. Employers will have access to training programs to upskill and advance their existing employee base. Of critical importance is this program will help train workers in our city and help small businesses implement e-commerce tools. Nadelson Dale will be conducting outreach meetings to our businesses and residents to obtain feedback on the economic development strategic plan. Grun and Associates will be conducting final community outreach events regarding the city's specific plan for the Los Angeles and Tappo Street corridor. So this concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for questions.
Can I just say one thing? Thank you so much for highlighting the EDC and everything that we're doing there. And that digital upskilling is a great program. So hopefully, that will be ongoing and not just for this temporary season, but thank you.
Councilmember Littler.
Just a couple of quick questions. Thank you both. Appreciate it. With your talking about, I think your slide where you compared the retail sector, we're at 8.5%, I believe is what you said. And you compared us to other local entities. And it appears, obviously, at least what was being shown, that we are higher by anywhere from 2% to 4%. And you talked about needing to right-size what our retail needs are. Can you maybe clarify? Or maybe when you say right-size or address that, are you suggesting that's going to be done with the Grun studies? Or what are your thoughts on?
Well, I think the Grun study will provide additional opportunities for mixed-use or for different type of retail stores in addition to housing. I think some of our business community is starting to come back after COVID. We're seeing a little bit more activity with leasing. And it may be that we are possibly over-retail for our community. That's something that we'll find out with our strategic plan and with Nadelson Dale and Grun and Associates.
Okay, thank you. And looking at the office space, you had 22 projects, et cetera. There was one, the biggest one, had 15,000 square feet. I'm just curious, what facility is that in the office environment that had? In your sector?
It's a building on Guardian.
So in the right side of the screen, the building that's down by Callahan Field, right there, next to Brandeis, that is the 4100 Guardian.
Oh, got it. Okay. And how long has that been vacant, or is that just recently?
Well, it actually may be in transition. So there may be something different happening with that building in the long run. There have been a couple of tenants that left that building.
And it's completely vacant?
Not completely vacant, no.
Okay, just want to understand. Thank you. Appreciate that information.
I think of that building, 47,000 or 50,000 square feet are vacant, of that entire office location.
A couple of the tenants over there behind me in the Target Center on Sycamore, between Sycamore and Calena, Cochrane. The tenants that are in behind there, there's a couple workout places back there, a breakfast shop, and a little market called Last's. I heard that they're having trouble getting their high-speed internet installed there. We reached out, they reached out to us to ask for help and that. Apparently, there was something about consulting guys going around. The owner of that property wouldn't let them put the fiber back there. Have we heard anything about that? I want to make sure that one of the points you made in there, offering the amenities, that's very important.
Well, I have not heard from them. And I talked to the lady who runs the Body Brain Train, the cardiovascular program. I haven't spoke to her. She's never mentioned anything. So this isn't news to us. We can reach out to them.
Maybe they just told it to me. I'll tell them. Because I want to make sure that if they are having trouble there, that we at least talk to the owner of the property, see if we can smooth that over, make sure it happens.
We can have a conversation with SciFi to get at least their side if they may reach out to the property owner.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Next on the agenda is item 3C1, informational presentation by youth council member Advith or Adi Nair.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the city council. My name is Advith or Adi Nair. I'm currently a sophomore at Santa Susana High School, and this is my first term on the Simi Valley Youth Council. It is my utmost pleasure to be with you to give updates on recent youth council events as well as upcoming plans. On January 20th, the youth council, as well as the Ronald Reagan Presidential Foundation and Institute, hosted this year's Youth Town Hall at the Ronald Reagan Presidential Library. A special thank you to Mayor Thomas, council members Littler and Rhodes, and city leaders, city manager Brian Gabler and city attorney David Caseras for attending. In attendance were over 500 students from various middle and high schools across the city, as well as Congresswoman Julia Brownlee, who began the event with her opening remarks. At the event were panelists Mark Berkman, the CEO for the Organization of Social Media Safety, Dr. Clive O., Professor of Public Relations at Pepperdine University, Ms. Serena Wen, a clinical social worker with the SVUSD, and finally, District 4 Supervisor Janice Parvin. At the event were also youth council moderators Ashton Rowe and Alama Crossen, and our emcee, Abhishek Jagannathan. Together, we were able to successfully inform and educate attendees on the topic at hand and allow them to ask questions and voice their concerns. Throughout the Youth Town Hall, many important points were discussed, all of which pertain to the overall theme of social media and its impacts on mental health. We discussed how social media can mis-portray people's lives by showing curated, select moments. We showed how social media can make relationships more about quantity rather than quality. One main takeaway from the event was the Less Phone Time Challenge, which was a challenge to lower your daily screen time on your phone as well as other devices. On January 7th and February 11th, we had two facilitator training sessions for the upcoming Simi Valley Youth Summit, currently scheduled for March 10th of this year. In these sessions, we discussed logistics and ideas for the summit, all of which revolved around our central theme, that being reconnect to reality. We refined our leadership skills, which we will use in the breakout groups during the event, as well as practice organizing and choosing icebreakers to use during the event. During our youth summit, we will coordinate a service project to support our local Seroptimus International Simi Valley chapter. I would highly encourage any high school student interested in attending our 20th Annual Youth Summit to register at www.simivalley.org/youthsummit. Again, that is www.simivalley.org/youthsummit. Another major event which we are planning is the annual talent show competition and showcase on Thursday, April 6th. Please share with friends and family that solo and group acts can now sign up at bit.ly/yctalent23. Again, that is bit.ly/yctalent23. I invite everyone to follow us on Instagram, Facebook, and YouTube @SimivalleyYouthCouncil, which is a great way to keep up to date on youth council events as well as resources for the youth. Again, that is @SimivalleyYouthCouncil. I would like to thank Mayor Thomas and members of the city council for allowing me to be here tonight and for supporting the youth council. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to ask them, and have a fantastic evening.
Thank you very much for your report. Any questions? Councilmember Rhodes.
So thank you for the outstanding report. Well done. And the youth council that we got to attend. You're absolutely right that a takeaway of the challenge to reduce screen time, I have been unsuccessful so far. But the topic they also brought up was the quality of what is going on during your screen time. And so thank everyone that put that on. It was top-notch, really professionally done, great panelists. Adults and students learned a ton from that, so well done, and thank you for that.
Councilmember Littler.
Thank you, Councilmember Rhodes. And just a dovetail, bravo, sophomore and first time. Well done. Question, it was lovely to sum, it was wonderful. Tell us, the Youth Town Hall, students of all what ages? Is it middle school and high school?
Yes, middle and high school students across the city.
And how do they sign up to attend or participate, or if they'd like to come?
I believe it was an online form as well as in-person, just letting them know.
Gotcha. And am I correct in that they are excused from school for attendance to this? This is an official?
Yes. And actually, we have opened, the Youth Town Hall has opened up the last two years, where before it was the teachers, you know, they'd either be in their leadership class, or it might have been a government class from each school. And now there is an option where students can come by themselves. So we actually had four that came from Canada to attend the event. They were here looking at schools. But, you know, so we did have a wider reach.
Well, that's exciting. Well, bravo. And so what is your talent going to be for the talent show?
I don't believe I'm going to be participating.
I'm sorry. Didn't mean to put you on the spot. Clearly, you're an orator, so there's your talent. Thank you so much. Appreciate all you're doing.
Well, that was an excellent program at the Reagan Library. The topic of that program was spot-on for today's youth. It's a very important topic, and I thought it was a very professional presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Next on the agenda is item four, public statements. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council says there are no public hearings under Agenda Item 5 this evening. Agenda Items 4 and 6 are combined, and the city council will hear all public statements under Agenda Item 4. Agenda Item Number 4 and Agenda Item Number 6 are the times allotted for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. Speakers will be called on in the order in which their car was submitted to speak for Public Statements, Item 4, for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the city council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Mr. Mayor, unless you have any other comments, we can begin public statements.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Bill Mead.
Councilmembers, first time here. Finally, got to me the other day. I had to come in and say my piece to you, so you know what we're doing. Traffic safety in Simi Valley is getting horrendous. And I think the council needs to come up with a month where they say, all right, we have Traffic Safety Month. Our police department is going to be out there. They're going to be writing some tickets for speeders and wrongdoers. They're just not, they're not obeying the rules out there. They're too much doing this, and then they ride your bumper. And Royal LA Avenue and Alamo, if, I don't know if you pay any attention to it, but if you're doing 40 miles an hour going down either one of these streets, that's not fast enough because they got to come up behind you. They're riding your tail. They got to get around you. And, or they got to run the light if it's turning yellow. The reason why I say this is last Thursday, I don't know if anybody caught this on Channel 2, but they had a report on the worst cities for traffic accidents in the Los Angeles-Ventura area. Of those cities, Santa Clarita, Fullerton, Orange, Huntington Beach, and Simi Valley. And the reason why I'm here tonight, my wife, in the past four years, has had three traffic accidents, none of which were her fault, and all by younger drivers. The first one was two girls about 18. The second one was... The second one was another young person under the age of 25. And the last one, just back in November, was again, a young man who was probably about 23. And somewhere along the line, they're distracted. So, I've had two cars totaled. Our last one was $8,000 to fix. And my wife was just sitting at the stoplight to make a left-hand turn. So, my golf partner had his Lexus totaled down on Alamo here in front of Vaughn's. And my neighbor had a drunk driver two weeks ago, early Sunday morning, T-bone his, run the red, the stop sign at my intersection, took out his truck. $8,000 just to take the truck apart to look at it. That's not counting what it's going to cost to fix it. Recent trip of mine going down Fitzgerald from First Street, there's three stop signs, I believe, between First Street and Arringer. There was a woman behind me, just, she couldn't wait to get around me. She was riding my tail. When we finally got to Arringer, when it turns into two lanes and she finally got around me, I looked over, she went by. She's got her cellphone out here, hand on the wheel, and she's texting as she drives by me. I think we need to talk to the police chief and see about getting some enforcement in the city. The people are just taking too many liberties and putting too many people at risk.
Okay. Thank you. I got to call time, sorry.
Maria Ventura.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager, City Staff, and Simi Valley residents. I am Maria Ventura. I'm a Senior Public Affairs Manager for SoCalGas. And I'm here tonight, I wish, providing some better news. But SoCalGas bills have been historically high, if you may have noticed. And it's been on top of mind for many of our customers who have been receiving January bills that were higher than historical. Market prices for natural gas have dropped significantly this February when compared to prices seen in January. While prices in the western region have decreased from the prices seen in January, they remain higher than last year. The cure procurement rate changes each month, and that reflects the price SoCalGas pays for natural gas for residential and business customers. SoCalGas does not set the price for natural gas. Instead, natural gas prices are determined by national and regional markets. SoCalGas buys natural gas in those markets on behalf of residential and small business customers. And the cost of buying that gas is billed to those customers with no markup, meaning SoCalGas is not profit from the movement of gas commodity prices. I do have good news to share. The California Public Utilities Commission approved the acceleration of the California Climate Credit for SoCalGas customers in response to unprecedented natural gas prices impacting the western United States. SoCalGas residential customers will receive a credit of $50.77 in their February or March bill. We continue to inform and offer several ways to help income-qualified customers on our bill assistance and forgiveness programs, home improvement assistance, and level-paid programs. SoCalGas is also taking additional steps on delaying collection activities on overdue residential accounts until April 1st, and will not disconnect overdue customers before July 1st. We also delayed non-residential disconnection until at least March 1st. In addition, SoCalGas recently donated $1 million to the Gas Assistance Fund, which helps income-qualified customers pay for their natural gas bill. To learn more, please visit socalgas.com. And I have a couple of quick tips. How can we reduce your natural gas usage? Lower the thermostat at your home to 120 degrees. Wash clothes in cold water. Reduce your water heater temperature. And not using not-essential natural gas appliances such as pools, spas, fireplaces, that sort of thing. Again, visit socalgas.com for more information. I do appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
The next speaker is Heather Corns. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. For this opportunity to share with you all tonight, my name's Heather Corns, representing Pat Montoya and Not One More. I'm here to address the issue of disbanding the heroin task force. Not One More, as most of you know, has been a part of the movement for education in schools, support, and community awareness on the issues regarding the drug epidemic that has affected our own city as well as the county and our country. We started this movement in 2012 due to the issues associated with substance use disorders. We've lost many in this community and the surrounding areas as well. We used to use the words "pills to heroin", and today it has changed to "one pill kills". In today's world, this dynamic has changed with the addition of deadly and highly addictive fentanyl, which, as we all know, is sweeping across the country. We depend on the whole community to bring this awareness to light and to our citizens and our children. In the previous City Council meetings, the issue of disbanding the task force has been brought to the table. This is very concerning to every citizen with the dynamics of the drugs that are going around in our community. We know this because we are at the street level, and we have noticed the impact of these drugs. We are here to ask that you do not disband this task force, but to take this time to update the awareness that is important to our community and for the safety of all citizens and our children. It is not the cure, but it is part of what we need to continue to bring awareness and support. Please reconsider the disbanding and maybe make a name change to the task force to be inclusive of all substances. One life lost to overdose and fentanyl poisoning or addiction is one too many. Thank you for your support through the years and for your time tonight.
Elena Johnson.
Mayor Thomas and members of the Simi Valley City Council, a pleasant good evening to all of you. And before I go off, I wanted to wish you a Happy Valentine's Day. A few more hours, and we're going to hit February 14. So, I'm here because I received a letter in the mail about a month ago, and I thought it came from the Simi Valley City Council. It talks about quality-of-life policing. And it started with a question that says, "Don't you notice that cities with clean streets, no graffiti, have very low rate of crime? And so, we can speak for you, to your City Council, about addressing the issues of quality of life." And I said to myself, "I don't need these guys to talk to you. I can stand in front of you and let you know that this is what we want here." You see that picture there on my left that I come every time I see here? That's the Simi Valley I want to be. I don't want to see trash. I don't want to see graffiti. I don't want to see people like playing loud music on the street or, you know, people drinking in front of their lawns, right? And so, what they call that is quality-of-life policing. And they're enjoining people or encouraging people to like deport to the police department and make sure they call people to do code enforcement. So, it's wanting for us to call the police department to say, "There's graffiti over by Haywood where you know how..." Because I'm talking about stuff that I have seen. But sometimes it would go two days before it gets removed. It gets removed after all, right? And that's the quality of life that I want to be here in Simi Valley for. I came here in 1984. I left for a few years. I came back because I love the city the way it is. So, quality-of-life policing. So, now I'm looking at Councilmember Rocker Rhodes, who ran on your campaign. Remind you, Mr. Rhodes, you said that no matter who you are, Republican or Democrat, those potholes need to be fixed, right? So, again, I'm asking this city to make sure that somebody's driving around the street, don't wait for us to call that, "Hey, I broke my axle because I drove into the pothole", right? The second thing that I wanted to talk to you about is what they talk about, the lady over here, Ms. Heather, right? And that is why I want to really say this. I work in juvenile hall, and we have a lot of kids overdosing on fentanyl. That's juvenile hall. We don't know how it's going there. Our kids have access to those drugs, left and right, in an open city like Simi Valley. To disband a task force on something that is so precious, because our kids' lives are precious to us. We will be sharing the street with them, and whatever happens to them breaks heartbreak to their families, right? So, if you are thinking of lessening or not coming up with something that will prevent injury to our kids because of drug use, please don't do that. Our kids are precious. You have children yourself. Let's do everything we can to make sure that we do not have that drugs in our city. Thank you so much, and Happy Valentine's Day.
Eliza Thomas.
Hi, my name's Eliza. I am a board member with Not One More, and I am the, I run the domestic violence and sexual abuse portion of Not One More. I wanted to follow up on what Heather was saying, but as someone in this community who's sober, I have been sober from heroin. It will be 11 years this March. The task force is so important to us in so many ways. As a resident, in this past year alone, across the street from my house, they disbanded a fentanyl operation where they got more than $50,000. That's across the street from my six-year-old son. In that same apartment complex, there was an explosion due to manufacturing. They disbanded that as well. They kept my son safe. They kept every single person in my community safe. They got rid of those people. Half of the reason that I'm sober today is because of the drug dealers that I had are in prison. Without that task force, the prevention that we're working for with the children, it's not as good. We're not going to have it. We founded Not One More, working with this task force. And we're not saying work harder. We're saying we can't do it without them. We can't. We need that behind us. It is so important. I'm with Heather on changing the name, if that's what we need to do. We're the front line. I'm a sober addict. I have a brain disorder that's incurable that causes onset dementia before the age of 50. I won't know who my son is by the time he's 30. That's not what I want for anyone's kids. That's not what I want for any adult. Without this task force, it's not just death that can happen. It's lifelong illness. It's lifelong disease. We have to do something, and we have to keep doing it. They're doing a great job. There's no reason to get rid of them. And I'm so passionate when I say, "Please don't take this away from the community. We need it so much. We're the ones at the high schools. We're the ones interacting with the kids. We're the ones that the parents call when their kid dies. We're the ones who see those parents. We need this task force more than anything. Simi Valley has been the only one to stand up and say, 'There's a problem here.' We know there's a problem, and we need to fix it. We can't get rid of this now. So, please, don't disband the task force. Thank you."
Mr. Mayor, that was the last speaker. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 4A, City Council Comments Regarding Public Statements.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight and speak. It was not long ago I was out there saying my piece, and now it's interesting to be up here, hearing it. We don't get to react. We don't get to respond. We don't get to tell you what we're thinking about based on what you have told us, because it's not an agendized item. I would ask that the City Manager explain the difference between the task force being disbanded and other possible things that could be taking its place, if that's something we can do.
I can very briefly say that the task force was very good at getting messages out regarding heroin use and drug abuse. While we will be coming back with an agenda item to discuss the task force, that would not go away. So, it would, that element would still continue. And our police department is working very closely with the DA's office and the Ventura County Sheriff's Office regarding the task forces that they have that we participate in regarding enforcement issues. So, they're a little bit different, but none of that would go away in any scenario that we would propose.
And then, and just to make that much more comment on that, your, all of your comments were 100% spot-on. I don't think there's anyone up here on the dais that wants to detract from or take away from the resources available. And I think that they might just be evolving. Ms. Ventura, being Public Relations for the gas company at this point is a tough job. Thank you for coming out and sharing that information. Hopefully, it's not like gasoline prices that raise so quickly and then come down so slowly, but you gave us a good update. Thank you. Mr. Mead, I totally agree that I've been witness to the traffic being an issue. I haven't experienced the accidents yet, thank goodness. But I think it'd be interesting to see what we can do about a Traffic Safety Month. I think that's not an unreasonable ask. Ms. Johnson, I will get the potholes fixed, I swear. No. It is, it is a policy within the city to look at the potholes and prioritize them in order. And I'm watching them watch the potholes. All right. Those are my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Litzler.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank Not One More and all that you do for our community and continue to do. We do have, every community has a problem, but you're willing to shine a light on it and to be very active. And so, I know that as a council, we're committed to making sure that you get resources and get support and what that looks like ultimately as far as the task force involvement. I hope it is very tangible that we're working together and so intend to be very aware of what is being proposed. Mr. Mead, I loved your comment. I quote, "We need to talk to the police chief. Know that he's sitting right behind you." And he heard, and he heard everything you said. And so, I anticipate that he'll have conversation and is aware of your concerns. So, yeah, he's the chief. So, yeah, so, but we, we concur, though, that we want a safe community. And so, thank you for bringing your concerns to our attention. And again, thank you all for what you have to say. One question for Ms. Ventura. You mentioned that CPUC approved a $50 credit. If I understood you correctly, is that something that we can push out? How is that being taken advantage of? Did I understand what you were saying? Well, I don't know if you can, I'll leave it to the City Manager.
Actually, we're, I was looking at our PIO, Sam. We are pushing that information out.
Okay. I just want to be, very good. I just want to be sure that our constituents know how to collect, because certainly, they did go up. But anyway, but thank you all for your comments, and so appreciate your being here this evening. Thank you. And Happy Valentine's Day to all of you.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quick, I don't want to repeat everything they just both just said, because I think they expressed my opinions very well also. Eliza? Eliza, thank you for coming out and sharing your story. That was just heartwarming, and I wish you all the best. And we will do what we can. Again, like I said, the police chief's in the back row, so we know who to talk to on this. But I just really am happy and admire those of you that come out and speak to the City Council. It's a hard thing to do the first time. And those of you that come back often, it's a great thing for us to know what you're thinking. So, we can't fix it if we don't know that there's a problem. So, thank you all for coming out tonight.
May I pretend judge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say, especially to the lady that came up and talked about being proactive in potholes and graffiti and stuff like that, we count on citizens to be proactive for us, because our police officers, our city workers, our sanitation guys can't be everywhere in the city at once. So, we count on citizens to see this stuff and call us, and we try to get it fixed as soon as possible.
Thank you.
And we will continue to do that. And as far as your very touching story, especially because I remember that apartment blowing up, the one where they were doing the honey oil stuff, yeah. That had nothing to do with the task force on heroin. That had all to do with our police department and the joint partnerships they have with other agencies around our county. They are the ones that do those kinds of enforcement. The task force on heroin is basically informational process. And while, like I said, that's not going away. It's probably just going to morph into something else as soon as we can get herding those cats together and get those people together for a meeting. That's the way it works. It's not going anywhere. That's what I wanted to say, everybody. Also, thank you for coming out, speaking, and have a Happy Valentine's Day.
And thank you, everybody, for speaking tonight. And in regards to the task force, I've been involved in drug abuse education for the past 13 years. So, I fully appreciate the importance of that and how important it is. And I do believe that there's no such thing as too much. So, thank you, everybody.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 7, the Consent Calendar. And there are two resolutions for your consideration this evening. Consent Item 6, Resolution Number 2023-06, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley Authorizing the Grant Acceptance and Execution of the Grant Funds from the State of California Budget Act of 2021 SB 129 for the Electrical Infrastructure Upgrades at the Simi Valley Public Library. And Consent Item 7, Resolution Number 2023-07, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley Confirming the Existence of a Local Emergency and Authorizing Remote Teleconference Meetings of the Legislative Bodies of the City of Simi Valley Pursuant to Brown Act Provisions.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, if there's anybody wants to pull something.
I would like to pull, I have some questions on the minutes. I'd like to pull the first item. Item number one, the minutes. So approval, there's some questions on the minutes. But if Councilmember Judge or Mayor Proton Judge wanted to move passing the rest, I just want to pull number one.
Can I move that we accept Consent Items 2 through 7?
Second.
Councilmember Kavanaugh. Thank you. For Consent Items 2 through 7, the motion passes unanimously.
Mayor, if I could just.
So, Councilmember Lister.
Thank you. My questions, and I'm sorry that I didn't call earlier, but I need to discuss some of the issues. A couple of things. On page 29, there is an error in the minutes where it said that Ken Rice was appointed as Mayor Thomas's planning commissioner. It should be, it should reference Mike Judge. So I want to be sure that that name correction is found, is changed. I want to be sure that I, I believe it was in my, yeah, it's the last paragraph, page 29? You caught that? Okay, very good. The second, and this is, this may need a little bit more discussion. Page 39 is, references the motion that we made with regards to the grants. And I'm concerned that the motion did not reflect our decision that $5,000 for the Rotary would be coming from another source. The motion is accurate. It did say that they weren't going to get it, but I guess I'm wondering, is there some way in the minutes we can reflect that, whether it's in the motion itself or the statement was made that Rotary Club would still be receiving those funds but from another source? It was my understanding that that was the nature of that discussion, and that would be on page 39 of the minutes.
We can, at, what we can add is languages such as the Quanis Club of Simi Valley will not receive $5,000 for Star Spangled Jam and Firework Special from this funding source, and another funding source will be used.
If we could. I would really like that reflected in the minutes to just, to be sure that, that was my remembrance of what we did, and I want it reflected, so I would appreciate if that's all right. I don't know if we, I don't think we need to re-vote on that. Do we? No, no, we need to vote on item one, but on the minutes correction, we don't need to change.
I'm fine with Mr. Gabel's interlineation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gabel.
And then I brought forward, City Manager, the correction as well on Clean Power Alliance.
Yes, that is page 37. Fourth line down will eliminate the alternate number one reference. As Councilmember Rhodes is the appointed member, and Mayor Thomas is actually the alternate number one.
And for City Attorney, just a clarification, since I wasn't on the dais, and we're voting on minutes from previous, still okay to vote on those?
Yes, you can still vote on the minutes today.
May I motion to approve Consent Item Number One?
Second.
As amended.
As amended.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is item 8A, Second Reading of Ordinance Number 1347 Approving a Change of Zone Classification and Adopt the Mitigated Negative Declaration to Change the Zone of a 0.22-acre Portion of a 4.57-acre Site for Property Located at 1850 Haywood Street. The reading of the ordinance is as follows. Ordinance Number 1347 and Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley Approving a Change of Zone Classification and Adopt the Mitigated Negative Declaration to Change the Zone of a 0.22-acre Portion of a 4.57-acre Site for Property Located at 1850 Haywood Street. And staff is available for questions.
No questions, but I'm willing to make a motion as this is a second reading. I move, thank you, I move to adopt Ordinance Number 1347.
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 9A, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the City of Simi Valley Code of Ethics and Conduct for Elected Officials and Members of Appointed Boards, Commissions, and Committees. And Samantha Argabright is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council. The item before you is the City of Simi Valley's Code of Ethics and Conduct for Elected Officials and Members Appointed Boards, Commissions, and Committees. The code was initially adopted by the City Council in 2002 and is brought back to the City Council for consideration every two years. The code was last considered in November of 2021, and at that time, the Council directed that all appointed members of boards, commissions, and committees be required to take AB 1234 ethics training as part of their appointment to their volunteer position. The staff report includes the Statement of Purpose and the 18 Guiding Principles of the Document beginning on page one of the report. The City Council may wish to review the Statement of Purpose and the Guiding Principles and provide direction to staff whether they continue to reflect the values of the city as currently stated. The City Council may also consider making no changes to the document at this time, and staff will bring back this item in the first quarter of 2025 as scheduled. This concludes staff's presentation, and I am available for questions.
Seeing none.
I'm sorry, I did push the, in the cue button, and I think, is it showing up there? I think Mr., Councilmember Rhodes did as well, I'm guessing. Thank you. Actually, I, it was, it was good to review it. Always is good to review this regularly, and I appreciate it coming back before us, because I think it's always a good reminder. And I know that we sign it. I know that many of the commissioners, all of them, sign it, et cetera. I wanted to add, actually make a slight change and add a couple of words to the item number three, which is conduct of members. That would be the first page, or well, or number four, depending on how you're looking at it, the document. But item three reads, "The professional and personal conduct of members must be above reproach and avoid even the appearance of impropriety. Members shall refrain from abusive conduct, personal charges, or verbal attacks upon the character or motives of other members of council, boards, commissions, and committee to staff of public." I've, I've been gratified to be here for four, several, four years now, and I've seen all sorts of fun conversations on this dais, but there have been a couple of occasions, I think, where, and it's understandable, where maybe where someone has, maybe it's been comments to those who've come before us. I would just like to add, maybe make more clarification of what our verbal conduct should be. And I would love to add the words, just be more, "Members shall refrain from abusive conduct, personal charges, verbal attacks, or demeaning comments." I'd like to add those two words, because I think sometimes we have said things that, or maybe on, that would be better left unsaid, even if they're attacks coming towards us, anyway. So I just want more clarification there that, and I would, I would add those two words, because I think that that speaks to what our behavior should, or conduct should be. Am I making sense to what I'm requesting? So anyway, I would, that would be my, my suggestion, that we simply add a little more clarification to what our verbal conduct should be.
I think it, it's already inferred, and this is self, what do we call it? Self-enforcing, self-enforcing. But I know what you're, what you're saying and.
Well, I guess what it is, is that abusive conduct, personal charges, verbal attacks, all seem so strident and very, you know, very, very obvious.
I would consider any verbal attack to be demeaning conduct.
Well, I would agree, but I, but I think that, I guess maybe because I've heard from this dais, what I feel, or have been demeaning comments on occasion, that I wouldn't, it is a form of verbal attack, but maybe it's softer, or it's less insidious, but I think it's still, anyway. That was my thought, that I'd add that, because I think it speaks that we should be even more aware of what we say. That's all. But again, if the rest of this body feels that that's contained in what's there, I, I'm okay.
I think it's contained. It makes, a verbal attack and a demeaning comment, I think, kind of go hand in hand.
I feel the same way.
Okay. Sounds to me like we're not changing that particular paragraph. Fair enough.
So, then can we get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to make no changes to the Code of Ethics and Conduct for Elected Officials and Members of Appointed Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 9B, Introduction of an Ordinance Amending Article 1 of Chapter 1 of Title III of the Simi Valley Municipal Code Regarding Exemptions from the Business Registration and Tax Requirements for Charitable Religious and Nonprofit Organizations. The reading of the ordinance is as follows. Ordinance Number 1348 and Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley Amending Article 1 of Chapter 1 of Title III of the Simi Valley Municipal Code Relating to Business Tax Certification, and Carolyn Johnson is here to present this item.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. This is an item that the City Council had requested putting on the agenda for discussion. This item is to exempt certain businesses from the city's business tax certificate requirement. City's first business tax ordinance was adopted shortly after incorporation for the purpose of generating general fund revenue. Six years later, the ordinance was updated to remove the reference to a business tax license and replace the word with business tax certificate. The purpose was to clarify that the purpose of the tax is to generate revenue for the city, not to regulate businesses. Business taxes are one of the general fund's largest revenue sources. So under the current ordinance, a business is required to register with the city and obtain a business tax certificate anytime business is conducted within the city, even when the business is located outside of the city. Businesses are required to pay three fees to the city. The first is a new business registration fee, which is $15 for out-of-town business or $65 for an in-town business. The business tax certificate fee of $15. And also pay a fee based on annual gross revenues. So if annual gross revenues are $20,000 or less, this fee would be a $15 fee. So an out-of-town business that is attending only one special event in the city in any calendar year would most likely have to pay a total of $45 in business tax fees to the city that year. An in-town business attending a special event would already be paying these fees anyway, and therefore would not have to pay any additional fees to attend the special event within the city. So this proposed update to the business registration and tax ordinance is to consider exempting certain vendors from the business registration and tax requirements. The exemption would apply to vendors participating in events that are sponsored by a nonprofit organization, put on for the sole purpose of fundraising for the nonprofit charitable organization that is located in the City of Simi Valley. The city has approved a special events permit for the event, and the vendor is not accepting any monetary or other financial gain for goods sold or services provided at the event. Currently, when a special event permit is being applied for, the organizer of the special event is required to submit to the city a list of all vendors that will be attending, along with their Simi Valley business tax certificate number. The city is not currently asking event planners the purpose of the event. For instance, we don't necessarily know if the event is to promote a business or organization, to provide entertainment to the community, or to, or for fundraising for the event organizer, or a combination of all of the above. We also don't ask which vendors are selling products or services at the event, which are handing out brochures and which are giving products away for free. So currently, the way our ordinance is structured, handing out promotional materials is considered conducting business, so any vendor in attendance at a special event is currently required to register their business and obtain a business tax certificate. In the staff report, the example of the Beer Fest, typically held in August, was used because the city is aware that this event is for the purpose of fundraising for the Simi Valley Sunset Rotary Club, and that the vendors were giving product away for no monetary compensation. Proceeds from ticket sales went to the Rotary and not to the vendors. So the vendors benefited from advertising their product, similar to food samples that are giving out at grocery stores, and also from helping a community-based nonprofit organization. So as stated earlier, under our current ordinance, vendors giving away products for free are required to register their business with the city and obtain a business tax certificate, because they are considered to be advertising their product, which would provide monetary gain perhaps later on for them. So it is difficult to say exactly what the impact to the city would be if the charge, if the change is adopted, because we're not currently separating out vendors that are not selling products or events that are only for fundraising. We have approximately 17 events in any given year that would be put on by a nonprofit. But if we go back to the example of the Beer Fest, there were 21 vendors, all of which were located outside of the city, 21 beer vendors, that is, and the total revenue to the city was $630 for that. So that would be for the 15, for the business registration fee and the business tax certificate fee for each of the vendors. And that concludes the staff report, so now I'll turn it over to City Council to discuss.
Councilmember Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the City Manager and City Staff for bringing this back to us on an agenda item I asked for a while back. I think it's important to look at this, among other things. It's really hard to get people to come and volunteer their service. The Beer Fest is the best example, because you're asking for a company to come into our city from out of our city, offer their wares for free to people to taste, test, and have a good time at this thing, whereas it might lose us $45 per vendor, but anyway, it was the nonprofit that paid that anyways. It wasn't the vendor. It was the nonprofit that paid that. So that was to get the vendors here. Otherwise, if you're asking somebody, hey, come into my town and give your stuff away for free, but hey, I gotta charge, I gotta charge you $45, it's just gonna be really hard to get people to do that. So I'm hoping this passes. I'm for it. And I want to thank staff and City Manager again for bringing it back.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Yeah, I just, I have a comment and then a question, and my comment echoes what Mayor Proton Judge has said. I had a coffee catering service as part of my business, and I would often go to events and sell coffee, of which I paid for an event fee and tax on the sales as well as a temporary event permit from the Health Department. That's an expected way of doing business. I've also donated coffee to those events, and I would be much more hesitant to donate coffee if I was going to get charged by the city for donating. And if I went to the expense of staffing and setting up a booth and then get dinged on top of it, that's, that's not, I would think twice about participating in that, even though, yes, I would be doing it for the altruistic reason, but also for the idea that I'd get some marketing benefit out of it. But that's, that's the quid pro quo of giving away your goods for free. The question that I have, however, from, looking at it from the city standpoint, is, is there a cost from these events that's being offset by the business fee that if we did not collect it, would become an expense for the city?
No.
I didn't, I didn't think so. So, yeah, I would be in favor of moving this, this change forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Lister.
Can I mic on? You, in your report, you raised some questions that actually may have changed my thoughts on this. When a group comes to put on, When a group comes to put on, or to do an event, a nonprofit, we don't ask them if it's strictly for fundraising, or if it is, is there just an assumption that if a nonprofit's doing it, it means it's fundraising? Is that now what we're going to assume? Is that, is that what the language then becomes?
Usually, we get a description from the sponsor of the event of what the event is for, and we're able to make a determination. If it's a nonprofit...
Well, so, for instance, let's say that it's a Happy Face concert, or it's some of the other great music festivals that we've had. Obviously, it's fundraising-based, but in the sense that it's being put on by a nonprofit, but you're entertaining and bringing in quite a, you know, people, so it...
It's only the vendors that are giving away.
No, 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 I understand, I understand. But if I understand this correctly, what we have to, it's a vendor who chooses to participate at a nonprofit event where they are fundraising, if I understand the language of what...
Yes.
And so, I'm concerned that we are putting an onus of burden on the city, first of all, to determine this is fundraising, and it's nonprofit, and it's strictly for fundraising. But my second question is, in the instance that you gave us, 21 vendors chose to come and participate. And as Councilmember Judge rightly pointed out, the fee was likely paid by the nonprofit in that instance. Do we know, I mean, so the nonprofit is making, I'm just interested, I find it interesting that 21 vendors chose to come and participate, because that's quite a few vendors who are giving something away. I see advantage, they're probably there because they would like people to become acquainted with their special, their special brew, their special, you know, their name. So, I mean, I see, I realize they're giving it away, but yet, I see that it is being done. Yes, I'm sure some of it is to be a good neighbor, but I think, I'm sure a lot of it's being done for advertising and for awareness. And something at that level, it just seems such a minimal amount that is being asked. I just think, I guess what I'm, I'm not articulating this very well, but what I'm seeing is we're asking maybe some policing of who these vendors are, because first, and also the other thing is, we don't ask the vendor, "Are you really giving it away? And are you not advertising?" Is that kind of what we're saying? In order to qualify for not having to pay, they have to be giving their product free and not passing out literature that advertises.
No, they can, they can pass out literature.
They can pass out literature, they just have to be giving their product free.
You just have to give it away for free. And the application that we have for the special events, whoever's filling it out has to indicate whether it's a nonprofit event or not, so we do get that information.
But then they also have to indicate, well, we have 20 people showing up, 18 are going to be charging for their food, these two are not. Is that not gonna be, that's not gonna become part of the form? You're gonna ask the city to make that determination, correct?
It would be part of the information we would get. It really isn't that complicated. I mean, we work, our staff, Carolyn's staff, work very closely with the person that is putting on the event. My staff as well, work with, working with the customer service staff. It's, there's an ongoing dialogue when the special events are being applied for. It's not a burden upon our staff.
So, generally, when there is a nonprofit fundraising event of some kind, whether it be a concert, or whether it be a Beer Fest, or whatever the event might be that will draw in the public, how many, well, generally, what would you say, how many new businesses do we now have coming into Simi Valley that will need to be licensed? What's the general number that we do? Obviously, it was 21, I gather, all 21 had never been here before, is that correct? So, 21 new licenses had to be, is that accurate, Carolyn? Did 21 new licenses had to be issued?
Probably. They were all out-of-town businesses.
We don't have any breweries in town, so I would say all 21 were out-of-town.
Okay. So, in other instances, except for that one event, what's the typical? Half of are already around, some are not? I mean, what's, how many new licenses do we acquire through these events, in general?
You know, the street fair is gonna, is gonna get a lot of, a lot more vendors that may not be, may be new. If the Park District has a craft fair, we may get a bunch. Yeah, if, we're talking, even if we got several hundred...
So, does this apply, so does this apply to the street fair now?
Well, no. Are you asking on a nonprofit basis, or a...
Well, the Chamber of Commerce is considered nonprofit.
Nonprofit, correct.
Their event that they put on is street fair.
Correct.
They are raising funds to support their mission, their organization, so anytime they go out to raise money is considered fundraising.
Sure.
So, any business that came, but if they weren't selling, if they were just demonstrating product and et cetera, they would then no longer have to have a license to come and participate? Is that correct?
If they are handing out their product...
Sure, but not selling it.
Correct. Then they would not need a business tax.
Maybe I can just help out a little bit. I think the element of this proposed legislation is pretty straightforward. Any business, trade, location, enterprise, and so forth, participating, and then it's sponsored, that'd be element number two. So, you have a business, sponsored, bona fide, nonprofit organization, and three...
And I'm sorry, let me ask what sponsored means. Mr. Casares, what does that mean?
As the main group or the main entity that's actually putting on the event. And the third element is which are not, the vendors are not accepting any monetary or other financial gain for goods distributed or services rendered at such an event. From a legal perspective, this is narrow, and there's a rational basis, and I have no problem with the legal drafting of it.
So, Mr. Casares, in the street fair, is every person that signs up and buys a booth considered being sponsored by the, I'm trying to understand what that term means. Are they all now sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce because they all choose to attend that event that they're putting on?
Right. Third element, which is whether or not they're accepting any monetary, so each case is case specific, and I believe this is narrowly tailored for this particular event, for this type of vendor, for this type of ongoing event.
Okay, and you don't see a potential for abuse, or...
Well, I hope not.
We certainly could narrow it down. For instance, we've talked about the Chamber of Commerce. They are not a 501(c)(3). You could, we could amend this to be only applicable to 501(c)(3), which would be your typical, your rotary, your coannis, your social organization.
I think I might feel better about that amendment if we...
That would be fine with, I think that's, quite frankly, that's the intent.
Right.
So, we would be, we would be satisfied with that. We could certainly support that.
It's somewhat actually already covered, because in the proposed exemption, it is nonprofits that are, as recognized by the Tax Board of the State of California or the Internal Revenue Service of the United States. So, it's contemplated that this would already be a 501(c) type corporation.
Well, but the Chamber is the (c)(6).
There's still 501 also.
Yeah.
So, you can definitely, in that case, further specify.
So, we could, I'm looking on page five, we could add nonprofit charitable organizations registered as a 501(c)(3).
And they have letters.
Oh, yeah.
So, they can prove it.
Yeah, I would like, if we could make that change, I would like that. And I do have just one more question, if that's all right. Carolyn, this is, this is just not maybe specific to just this change. You mentioned that for business license, and maybe, I have a business license, I operate here in Simi Valley, I just paid. I had a conversation with someone just this past week about the amount that they are to pay. If it's, you said it's based on annual gross revenues, is basically. Is that annual gross revenues tied to sales and production in Simi Valley, or is it tied to their entire operation?
Simi Valley.
In and out of, because that's not how it's worded.
We run into this all the time with businesses. It is, it is Simi...
So, it's supposed to be gross receipts delivered to Simi Valley?
Correct. If, yeah, if Boeing had a storefront business here selling aircraft parts, it would be just what they're selling here out of Simi Valley, not what they're selling across the nation.
So, how do I get my refund?
You could commit a claim to the city clerk's office.
I guess I better not make a public, okay, never, okay. I appreciate understanding that, because that's not how, anyway, this is another matter. I'd love it, that looked at a little more closely, the way it's worded in our, as it goes out to businesses, because I think it's not clear. Let me just put that there. So, okay, thank you. But that's, has nothing to do specific to this motion, I'm sorry. DeeDee, you wanted to say something, I think.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to agree with, I was going to explain that the street fair itself is a sponsor. All the vendors there are not sponsors, so they would have to pay if they're selling anything. So, that was, I was just gonna clarify that to make sure we were on the same page. I'm in agreement with this. I do think it should be, I do like clarifying the 501(c)(3) aspect of it, because we have a lot, there are a lot of nonprofits that are varying types, so I think that would be good. And if they're giving their stuff away for free, then let's not charge them, because they're giving it to our community members, so that's just my opinion. I'm done, thank you.
Okay. And I too am in agreement with this change, and I do also like the 501(c)(3) designation.
May I make a motion?
Please do.
I move to introduce the first reading of Ordinance number 1348, exempting certain businesses under special circumstances that are 501(c)(3)'s from the requirement of paying a business tax.
Second has amended.
I said a 501(c)(3).
She just put the amendment in.
Has amended with the 501(c)(3).
Call to the vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 9C, approval and adoption of the 2023 legislative platform, and Samantha Argoebri will present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas, and members of the City Council. I am back again, and this time, I'm asking you to consider the city's legislative platform, which serves as a baseline for where the city stands on a broad categories of issues, which allows staff to respond quickly to legislation as it moves through this process. Often, the city needs to take action before the next City Council meeting convenes. The document included with your staff report was not the version that included a visual representation of the changes proposed, so you have a supplemental report that does show the red line changes. Staff presents the legislative platform to the City Council every odd numbered year for review and consideration with recommended updates. This year's recommended updates include: an update in the Public Protection Section referencing mental health, urging the state to comprehensively evaluate water supply in relation to housing production, allowing cities to consider existing infrastructure capacity when considering ADU approvals, supporting a graduated implementation for cities in the mandatory transition to electric vehicles, support of tax credits, loans, and incentives for the public, local businesses, and agencies who invest in energy-efficient technology, support for legislation that comprehensively evaluates energy policies in relation to current and future demand, including housing production, support for legislation or rule changes at the CPUC to hold investor-owned utilities to set rates and not allow them to unilaterally change due to market demand, support legislation that the proposed use of a site should be determined, the determining factor in the proposed cleanup level, and support legislation that requires wraparound services, including job training, be provided in housing programs for the homeless population to better prepare individuals for long-term success. It should also be noted that items I and J under Section 5 Resources and Environment, subsection 2 Water, should actually be under Section 6 Community Development, subsection 1 Housing. This concludes staff's presentation, and I am available for questions.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Samantha, thank you for taking on all of my questions earlier, as someone new to the whole legislative thought process here in the city. I think this is a well-thought-out document, and it really guides us well, and I like the changes that have been proposed. Thank you for that.
Councilmember Lister.
Thank you, Samantha Argoebri. Appreciate, again, it is important that we have this governing document, and I appreciate that this is a new business item that we can actually discuss and feel comfortable about it. And I do appreciate our conversation earlier. I am proposing in addition to, that we add one more sentence, or addition to this document. If you turn, if you want to turn to Section 16c, which deals with pension reform, I would propose that we add the sentence, "Support legislative objectives that maximizes returns on investment and doesn't limit investments to social or environmental mandated interests." I think we're aware that CalPERS, et cetera, has been choosing to invest in certain things to try to influence. Anyway, I think this is a way that we make our statement, that we want our pension funds receiving the greatest return, because otherwise, it's costing the city more and more when they're very selective about how funds are invested. So, that, do you want me to read it again? Okay. Okay, so, "Support legislative objectives that maximize returns on investment and doesn't limit investments to social or environmental mandated interests."
Just...
I can email that to you.
Just, sorry, just to make sure we don't run afoul of any state law, to the extent so authorized by law. Just want to make sure.
That's fine, but do we do that, I mean, with everything else? I mean, like ADUs, to the extent so authorized by law? I mean, let's, we don't do that to all, the other things we're saying.
If I can just interject, Mr. City Attorney?
Sure.
Since this is the legislative platform, this would be the city's position on any potentially proposed law, so this would be our opportunity to provide our perspective on that. So, I don't know if it's necessary to include as mandated by law or as allowed by law, because we're hoping to...
Influence law.
Influence the law. Thank you.
We appreciate you want to keep us out of hot water. We know what you're doing.
Well, this is an issue I absolutely agree with.
Great. So, that is the one change, then, thank you. And there's actually a potential deletion that I would like removed, one other line, and then that's it for me. I do have a little bit of a problem with major 2, Section 3, verse, or letter M, I shouldn't say verse, let me get there. So, 2, 3... Yes, this is, I have a little bit of a problem. It's, it states, "Oppose legislation that restricts the ability of a city to transfer revenue from a utility or other enterprise activity to the city's general fund." My understanding is that we came up with this when there was potentially quite a bit of funds in our utility lighting district, and we wanted, this is before I was on the council, I'm guessing that was the history of this, and at the time, that fund had grown, we couldn't use all the funds for what it was designated, and so we wanted a way to move it to someplace else where we could use the funds. My problem with it is that I think as shepherds of the taxpayers' money, they were charged, they were specifically charged for that particular usage. Basically, it was a, it was some kind of a percentage they had to pay, and it was specifically designated for lighting, or whatever it was, but that's what we're talking about. If a citizen has been charged an amount for lighting or something, and then we don't need it for lighting, or the lighting, that use goes away, we're saying here, we want to just be able to take that money and put it in our general fund. Now, I understand, it's nice to have, there's lots, we could spend that money well, and we do spend it well and carefully. There's no question that we're good shepherds of funds. My problem is, is that I think that, I think that we should not be lobbying to be able to take money from special funds and put it into our general fund. I have a problem with that. So, I would like to simply strike M and take it off, so that it's not in our legislative platform.
So, my, I will just, just in a quick response, is the, so the only person that can do an inter-fund transfer would be the City Council, so staff wouldn't be able to do anything like that. It would be a council action to be able to do that, and that could be if, if there was an abundance of funds in the waterworks or sanitation, not necessarily taxpayer, or not necessarily fees, but it could be part of that fund, it would preclude any transfer or borrowing of that money as well.
So, I think it depends, then, maybe we need to be clear of how we acquire these, what we're stating here, because as I read this, it looks as if it's, when it says...
It's just transfer revenue from the... It's just transfer revenue from.
Utility or enterprise activity in my mind, and that's like the, it was a lighting district, for instance, that we took funds from.
At that time, it was.
Right. And that was funds at the time that was acquired, if I'm not mistaken, by a special surcharge that people paid, isn't that accurate?
On the property taxes.
On the property taxes. And so it was designated for that purpose. So if we could delineate this in such a way that, I mean, do you understand, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Gable, but I want to be sure that we're, if it delineates specifically for something when they're charged, then I think we should be careful. If it is something that's supposed to help the funds come through a grant or something else, then by all means, I'd be happy to have it transferred in the general fund. I guess my problem is if we're lobbying for something that comes by way of a special assessment to our taxpayers. I guess that's the difference.
So I have.
And councilmember Rhodes.
Thank you. To that end, reading M, oppose legislation that restricts, I think that we have a system of governing how we do inter-fund or inter-agency transfers of funds, and we're already governing ourselves on that. Oppose legislation, if we're dealing with anybody in Sacramento that says, no, you cannot do something at the city level, I generally oppose that legislation because I think that I want local control. And so this particular thing, I'm good because it's oppose legislation, it's not saying anything about how we actually transfer funds amongst ourselves. I don't think that that's part of this legislative governing document. It's how I'm reading it. So what you're saying might be 100% correct, but that doesn't change my opinion that we want to oppose legislation that lets somebody else dictate that for us.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I'm in agreement with councilmember Rhodes in that I don't feel we need to take away this particular thing, because if we take it away and it happens, then we can't go backwards. We can't go back. So to me, by opposing anything, again, from the state telling us something we can or cannot do, I don't want to take away that possibility. But again, like City Manager Gable said, the city council is the only one that can move those funds. So at that point in time, you would have the citizens in front of us saying, wait, I paid those taxes for this particular thing, I don't want it moved. And so we have that ability to self-manage it ourselves. So I agree, I don't want to remove that in case, you never know what Sacramento is going to do these days. So, thank you.
Councilmember Litzner, did you have any?
Oh, well, I, because I'm aware of how it was added for the history, if I'm not mistaken, this was added because we, maybe you can tell me, let me ask that question. Did we add this to our legislative platform at the time that we wanted to take the money from the lighting district and put it in our general fund? Is that when this was added?
I believe that we didn't actually begin doing a legislative platform until about 2015, I want to say.
Yeah, I think, I think the dissolution of the lighting maintenance district happened through state legislation.
Right, we had to get special lobbying to get it done.
Correct, and I think it predates this document.
Yeah, so we did, thank you, Mr. Gable. We began doing the legislative platform later than the lighting district was dissolved. Yeah, it was 2014.
But was this statement added because we had to fight so hard with legislature to go to, to take that money into our general fund?
This statement was, one of the pieces of resource materials that staff uses when preparing the legislative platform is actually the guiding principles of the League of California Cities. And so this is one of the statements that was included in that document.
Okay.
Primarily to retain local control. One of the first statements in actually the, I think it's the Local Government section is support legislation that protects local control. It's General Governance, section 1, subsection 1, Local Control. So this item not only was recommended by the League of California Cities, but also allows the city to retain local control to be able to identify at those times in which you would like to authorize a transfer or not authorize a transfer.
Okay, that makes me feel much better, I understand the context. Okay, thank you. I'm willing to make a motion to approve this with my change as referenced, but I don't want to step on anyone else's toes, but. If you're all right, then I would so move that we accept, I'm doing this from memory, I'm not reading your lovely script. Oh, here's, I move to approve and adopt the attached 2023 legislative platform as proposed and as amended with the addition of item 16(c), the added statement to pension reform.
Second.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 10a, City Council Member Reports.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since our last meeting on January 25th, I participated in the Legislative Affairs Forum Call from the Chamber. On January 25th, I attended the Clean Power Alliance Orientation Zoom Call. Also on the 25th, the CBC Credit Union Ribbon Cutting, fun event, and looking forward to their partner also moving in, and that next ribbon cutting being Dunkin' Donuts. On January 26th, there was a special election meeting held for SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governments. District 46 is Moore Park, Thousand Oaks, and Simi, and the three cities needed to elect a member to that seat, and I thank the council for their support, and with the help of Moore Park City Council, I was elected to that seat, so thank you very much. On February 2nd, I then attended the Southern California Association of Governments Community, Economic, and Human Development Committee. They do a lot of names and a lot of acronyms. Fascinating committee to be on, and I just want to point out that for Simi Valley, we are extremely well represented. There are three significant subcommittees of SCAG, and we now have councilmembers on all three of those committees, and as well as two voting members in the general committee. Same day, I also attended their regional council meeting where they supported, endorsed, and ratified Ramp, which is a way of streamlining large projects, inter-jurisdictional projects. And it was only about a 300-page staff report, so I'm grateful to the city for making our staff reports smaller. Also, on February 2nd, I attended the first of my Clean Power Alliance meetings, nothing to report out of that. February 3rd through 5th, I'm going to mention that I attended Rotary's President-Elect Training Session, and I only bring that up because the speaker for our first evening event was Jan Harnick, who happened to be the Chair of SCAG, who I just met via Zoom the day before. So I went up, and we now have a good working relationship with the Chair of SCAG. On February 6th, Councilwoman Litzner and I interviewed candidates for Neighborhood Council 2 and 4. They were outstanding candidates. It was fun to meet such great and enthusiastic people from the community with great credentials and great ideas. On February 2nd, I attended the Teacher of the Month at Hollow Hills, and I'll defer to Councilwoman Litzner to give more details on that, since she plays a prominent role. On February 8th, I went to the Reagan Library and attended a speaking event by Mike Pompeo. On February 9th, I attended the Chamber Salute to Excellence Dinner and want to congratulate all of the award winners. And it is a night that reminds you why you are proud to live in Simi. On February 10th, there was a ribbon cutting for Urban Taco, which if you want to get a unique experience in taco, that is the place to go. The menu is amazing. On February 11th, Saturday night, I was a pads monitor, which the pads program, if you're not familiar, is where during the five winter months, those unhoused in our community have the opportunity to sleep indoors at a rotating event that has different locations. I happened to sleep over at the Methodist Church, great facility, and we're grateful for them to making their facility available for this program. And then earlier today, I had a meeting with the executive director and some senior staff of SCAG, getting a more one-on-one introduction so that I can participate more fully. And, Mr. Mayor, that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Litzner.
Thank you. It's fun to be back in the saddle, that's all. And you make me tired thinking of all the fun things you've been doing, Councilmember Rhodes. On Wednesday, January 25th, I too attended the ribbon cutting for CBC Federal Credit Union. I think it's kind of, it's good to note that they are a credit union that is specific to Ventura County, and that they have been in operation since March of 1952. And they started in Port Wayne, EMI as providing financial services for civil employees there, and they've finally moved their way, all the way to the east, or to the east side of Ventura County. They're quite excited to be here, and so they're there on LA Avenue. So it was, it was nice to visit with them, so a new financial institution to support in our community. On Thursday, January 26th, I attended VCOG's Administration Committee Meeting and was part of that planning. On Friday, January 27th, I attended the January Teacher of the Month for Simi Valley Ed Foundation, wherein we recognized Casey Baritone of Sinaloa Middle School, who is a wonderful teacher there who works in their special needs population, and specifically is the one teacher in the district that works with emotional needs students of that. And so commend her for her service to our community. Also on that day, I attended the swearing-in ceremony for Police Officer Derek Jester, who is a transferring, lateral transfer from LA Port Police, and he is delighted to be closer to home and to be serving in Simi Valley. And it was great to be there. And I will tell you, it was fun to also stand up and recognize that I believe that was the first official day that our new official chief of police, Steve Shorts, was in operation, and he was in good form. And so we are being well-served. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. On Tuesday, January 31st, attended Veronita's one-year anniversary celebration. Certainly a beautiful facility there on Cochran and Tappo, and they had to open in the middle of COVID. It was not an easy road for them, but they are, it was beautiful, lovely to see their new, their beautiful operation. On Wednesday, February 1st, Thursday, the February 2nd, and Friday, February 3rd, I had the pleasure of attending the New Mayors and Council Members Academy with Mayor Fred Thomas, and appreciated that association, and also Assistant City Manager Linda Swan. And appreciate their company and all that we learned. One of the things, actually, was I attended this four years ago. It was good to come back to get a refresher course and to renew some of the relationships, and, but one of my takeaways from that event, and they talked about many, many things, of course, and it was good to see what we're doing right and could continue doing, one of the things one talked about was the value of a goal-setting retreat. Of course, you're going to, you're going to notice it, and anyone can come, but that could be really a source of productivity for the council, and so I, I know we've talked about it before, but I'm going to mention it later when it comes to items to agendize. Also, in the midst of that, on Thursday, I did sneak away to attend SCAG's Energy and the Environment Committee meeting downtown at their beautiful headquarters. It's the first time I've been there since after COVID. I've been there pre-COVID, and I returned. It's still there, it's still functioning, but I was only one of two people attending in person. All the others have been Zooming, but I understand that one state changes in next month, it's going to suddenly change all of that, so it'll be interesting to see how that shakes out. But one of the, one of the educational presentations we had was a panel of brownfield expert, experts who talked about grants and receiving funding for brownfields. I have to confess that that was a term I was not really familiar with. There's buzzwords sometimes, I've decided that's learned, that's used in this. But that basically is land that has maybe some type of contamination on it that needs to be reclaimed in some way to be used for another purpose. And of course, there's quite a few grants that are directed towards reclaiming land for housing purposes. And, but my takeaway, specific to Simi Valley, well, I will tell you, the Ventura County, as they show the chart, we have much fewer sites identified than the other four counties, but that doesn't mean we can't use their funds and resources as well. But specifically, if there's a gas station or something of that kind of nature that could be retooled and used for something, anyway, it was good to know of the funds that might be available and happy to pass it on to our city people. Also on Friday, February 3rd, after we returned from this wonderful academy that was in Century City, I quickly stopped into the ribbon cutting for East Coast Pizza, Neil Federer, who is celebrating 13 years in existence here in Simi Valley. And it was good, it's always great to have our food establishments that have longevity, sustain, and doing good things for our community. On Saturday, February 4th, I had the, well, I just want to share this, that maybe we could add this to our closing memory of, I played the harp for the funeral services of Michael Sokano. His father is Julius Sokano, who's the president of Moore Park College, and this is his only son, who was taken suddenly. And it was just, anyway, a very difficult thing, and so I would love for us to reach out to this, to Mr. Sokano in some way, to recognize his tremendous, tremendous loss. On Monday, February 6th, again, it was delightful conducting interviews with Councilmember Rhodes, appreciated that opportunity, and some outstanding people who are willing to serve, thank them for their willingness to serve. On Tuesday, February 7th, this is the February Teacher of the Month, January Teacher of the Month was the week prior, but February Teacher of the Month, we honored Michelle Cooper, who is a fifth-grade teacher at Hollow Hills Elementary, who served for many, many years, and so recognize her. Appreciate my meeting with our Mr. Gable, our city manager, and again, it was lovely chanting Simi Valley Chamber Salute to Excellence, which I believe everyone here on the dais attended, and it was lovely to be there to celebrate our, through the chambers, some of our Business of the Year, Volunteer of the Year, and many other great things. On Friday, February 10th, I was there for the ribbon cutting of Urban Taco, grand opening. And I think that that was basically it, although I will tell you that it was good to attend the Council on Aging with Councilmember or Mayor Pro Tem, Mike Judge. Great things are happening in that group, and watch out, we've got some, I'm pleased at the renovating or some of the physical changes that we're doing to the senior facility, but I would say that the new, that new council, you've got lots of people who are making great things happen. And so, and again, Happy Valentine's Day, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kavanaugh, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Monday, January 30th through Wednesday, February 1st, I had to go up north for work, and I am going to say, the traffic up there is much better. They're saying, oh, the traffic's heavy, and I was doing 65 to 80 on the freeway. So can we arrange to have that switched down here in some way, shape, or form? It was wonderful. On February, Wednesday, February 1st, I had my first EDC Executive Meeting as the Chair of the EDC, and we had two new executive board members join us. One is the Mayor Pro Tem of Port Wayne, EMI, so Missy Perez, and then the other one is our County Board of Supervisor for District 4, Janice Parvin. So it's nice to have two new people on the executive board. Look forward to working with both of them. On Friday, February 3rd, the leadership class, the chamber leadership class of 2023 had the pleasure of seeing me for the second time, introducing or talking about being a citizen, excuse me, a council member, only because the mayor and the mayor pro tem were unable to attend, so they were stuck with me. But it was a lot of fun. It's a great class. They have, they're very energetic, they're very involved, they're very, have questions. City manager did a great job afterwards, so did city attorney. I didn't see anyone else, but we did, United presented a good front there. I think we did a good job. Thank you, Sam, for handling all that. On, I also, February, Thursday, February 9th, I also attended the chamber dinner with everyone else. It was a great time. It's wonderful to recognize all of the great things that people in our community do. I would like to. I would like to name two of them just because Liz Richardson is Ambassador of the Year, and she's a friend of mine. And then our own Sue Klepper here in the City Manager's Office. Her husband, Bill Klepper, was recognized as a Community Volunteer of the Year. So that was really a great thing to do that. Bill didn't let any of us at his table, I don't know why, but it was a great thing. But I sat at the city table and we had a really good time. We enjoyed ourselves. Saturday, February 11th, I went to my little grandson's soccer game. And if you know where the Apollo Fields are, across from them is the Challenger Field, which when I was on the Park Board of Directors in March of 2014, we built that field along with the help of the Amanda McPherson Foundation and some other, and the city of Simi Valley, as well as a couple of other entities. And there were games going on. And it was so much fun, we went over to watch them. My daughter had some of her students playing in the games. And so it was just really nice to see it being used and being utilized. There was a game before, a game we were at, and then there were games afterwards. They have two divisions. They have one for middle school and under, and then they have one for high school and up to adults. So it was really enjoyable to see a lot of local people out there and just enjoying themselves, seeing all those kids hit the ball and run the bases. And then some sitting out in the outfield, just throwing the ball to themselves, just like any other kid. So it was a lot of fun. You mentioned a funny thing, though. You talked about Hollow Hills. So at the soccer game, somebody said something about Hollow Hills. And I said, I went there. And the lady around next to me said, well, so did I. Come to find out, we were there like two years apart. I mean, Simi Valley does not have six degrees of separation, it has two. So, but it was very, very funny. And she's like, oh yeah, I know your sister. So we're two grandmas sitting out there, never met each other before. So it was a lot of fun. Today, on the way home, I stopped at the Samaritan Center to pick up some Valentine's Day cookies. It was nice to support them. I thought that was a great fundraiser event for them. I brought some for the city employees, so you guys will have them tomorrow. And then my last comment is just, way to go, Chiefs. So thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to first start off by apologizing to the Caneo Simi Moore Park Association realtors, or I was not able to make their installation luncheon on February 27th because something followed me back from the shot show and laid me out for a week. On Monday, January 30th, I was happy to conduct interviews for Neighborhood Councils 1 and 3 with Mayor Fred Thomas. He did a great job, picked some outstanding people. And I couldn't say anything more. Those are great candidates for those two neighborhood councils. On Tuesday, January 31st-- no, never mind. Thursday, February 2nd, I attended SCAG's Transportation Committee and the Regional Council. Now, somebody earlier said something about the crazy stuff Sacramento does. Let me give you an example. Calendar year 2023, transportation safety targets were set by SCAG. And these are the state safety targets, they want them adopted. And of course, we would all love to have zero. We would all love to have zero fatalities on our streets and roads. But in the second breath, the state of California decides about two weeks prior that they're going to now not enforce jaywalking in our state. So I'm really confused by things coming out of Sacramento most of the time. That's just one. Second thing we did that day during Regional Council, Rocky already talked about a little bit, was RAMP, the Rap Regional Advanced Mitigation Program. Basically, that brings developers and environmentalists together on projects so that they can talk about stuff before they're suing one another. Hopefully, that all works out. Again, it's from Sacramento, I doubt it. Friday, February 3rd, I attended the VCTC meeting over in Camarillo, where we did a couple of things with a lot more common sense. Passed a couple of different things on rebuilding stuff. Everything in that category is going great. There's not too many projects that affect Simi Valley directly. And when that does happen, I'll make sure to bring it to you. On Saturday, February 4th, I was happy just to attend the grand opening along with the mayor was there. I don't know if I saw anybody else there, I didn't stay very long, but I know the mayor was there, for the Epic Tacos over on Los Angeles and Yosemite Avenue. It used to be a pizza place in its prior life, but it looks like they're going to do great business. I loved their electronic signs and everything, and the food looked really good. On Thursday, February 9th, I too attended the Salute to Excellence. Can't say enough about that event. Chamber did a great job. And congratulations to all of the recipients. On Friday, February 10th, I attended the grand opening for Urban Taco. I wonder what else is going to be called Taco. That was a very cool thing. It was, it's the same owners that own Bluefin, so you know the food's going to be good. So great job for them. And today, I attended the Council on Aging meeting with Councilmember Lister. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. All right, let's see here. On Thursday, January 26th, I attended my first Simi Valley Tourism Committee Meeting. I was amazed at how much money they have in their account. Just leave it there. On Monday, January 30th, Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tem, Judge and I did the interviews for Neighborhood Council 1 and 3. And what stood out to me was how excited that they were to get involved with the Neighborhood Council. I thought that was fantastic, great candidates. January 31st, attended the one-year anniversary of Veronita. It was a big program and a great facility. I've been there before, attending a friend who's living there. Wednesday, February 1st through Friday, February 3rd, I attended the New Mayor and Councilmember Academy put on by California League of Cities. It was informative, it was entertaining, specifically Thursday. Got a lot of good information. Only downside was, well, Friday was all financial stuff. And it wasn't really the most exciting presentation I've ever seen. But I did learn a lot of new terminology that I, you know, am not familiar with in the private sector. So there was some value to it. Unfortunately, because of that, I wasn't able to participate in the Leadership Simi Valley Local Government Day. But I did hear about it from almost every member of that class. And they made me promise that I would, you know, meet with them on another occasion.
No, I wasn't good enough? Okay.
On February 4th, I attended the grand opening of Epic Tacos. Really nice couple. So excited. They have this booming food truck business that has quite a following. And so they took that momentum in opening the store. And I think they're going to do really well. They had a huge crowd show up. Let's see here. Wednesday, February 8th, attended the Mike Pompeo program at Reagan Library and couldn't have been more impressed. Thursday, February 9th, the Chamber Salute to Excellence Dinner. It was just, you know, a showcase of all the people that volunteer so much of their time in the city. It was a nice event. The next day, on the 10th, was grand opening of Urban Taco. My friends that own Bluefin next door, they're opening this. And I know they'll do well. It's been a spot that struggled in the past, but I know that they're going to make a go of it. And then later that night, on a last-minute invite, I attended the Moore Park Chamber Dinner. And it was a completely different type of dinner, but it was fun. I got to meet, you know, some people out in Moore Park. And that's all I have to report. So at this time, I'd like to call for any future agenda items. Councilmember Lister.
I think I referenced the future agenda item, but as we had the discussion in the academy, I think I would love, and I know that, Brian, Mr. Gable, you've discussed that we could and should do this in the future, but I want to bring it forward to this body that it would be nice to have an official goal planning session that we, as council members, that we sit down together and come up with really where we want, what we want to accomplish, what we want to do. And of course, notice it, so anyone in the public wants to come and listen to our discussion, that'd be great.
And I attended the same presentation and the value of that, and I agree with that. I thought it was a really good presentation they made on the value, what that can be for the council. And I don't see any other. So with that, we will adjourn this meeting in memory of Selma Police Officer Gonzalo Carrasco. Are now adjourned.
Thank you.